...are required to state their name and address for council record and limit their remarks to three minutes or less. Citizens are requested to frame their comments around items that fall within the authority of the city council. Generally, the city council will not take official action on items discussed at this time, or may place the item on file, take the matter under advisement, refer the matter to staff or committee for future report, or direct the matter to the police on an upcoming agenda. Anyone wish to speak?
Bill Anderson, 14452 Elm Street. I am up to talk to you about, I applied for a building permit to replace my fence in my backyard, and I was denied on, I applied on August 23rd and I was denied on October 20th. The reason for my visit is tonight is that the city engineer in the zoning department is sort of working a survey that was done on the property behind me. But when I go back on the deed, on my deed, and I'm going back to 1978, 1977, my property line was 185, or 165, from the back line up 165. And that's when John Lemire purchased the land. In 1982, John Lemire found out that he did own, he only owned 165 feet from the north to the south, and that there was a piece of land in front of the house that wasn't his, it was from people across the road. So John Lemire bought the piece of land from the lateral family. So that took my lot size from 156 to 170. The council authorized my neighbor to put a fence up, and one, and her lot size is 156 by 160, 156 north and south. So guys, I studied this thing, I couldn't figure out what, I couldn't get this 156 to work. So over the weekend, I went in the back off of Murphy's survey area point in the back, measured it to the south, 156 feet, comes right to Festner's yellow cab, comes right to his yellow cab. And I measured my 170, I go out to Elm Street. So then, the city engineer and the zoning guy had been using the Beacon Report as a guide to them, as a guide. So I went up on the internet and I got the Beacon Report down. And I looked at the beacon, it shows my front yard going out to Elm Street. But it doesn't show my, it doesn't show my neighbor coming out to Elm Street. So back in the 60s and 70s, we were both at 156. And then when we built the house, we bought the extra front, it should get to 170, and there's no divot in the back on the reports. But a survey report is showing this. So what I'm saying, guys, is that I own the same sized lot as my neighbor does, my neighbor got a permit. My lot is bigger than they were permitted, and I can't put my fence up. The other thing I'd like to discuss is this cul-de-sac on Elm Street. I spent some time this afternoon and I went out to Bellberry Township, and I got the exact paperwork on the cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac that was there when Bill Perry blocked out that road was 66 feet, the cul-de-sac is 66 feet. Now the cul-de-sac is half that.
Okay, time's up, Bill, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Yeah, I'm Randall Biffness from 17059 Riverwood Drive. And last year, we got a citation for having too many signs out, which were Christmas signs and stuff. It was kind of disappointing to me, I felt like Grinch stole Christmas from me. My wife has made a lot of the stuff in that. And one of the deals that we'd like to put up is Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, but because of the problems that we've had in the past, we're not able to do it now. All my neighbors love it, the whole community loves it. They like to drive by our place and see the Christmas decorations we put out. But yet, because of the ordinance that we have placed in Little Falls, we're not able to do it. And I'm just wondering if we're gonna get that changed to where a person would be able to put up Christmas signs without having to worry about stepping in the violations. That's pretty much all that I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Robin Hansel, 807 First Street Southeast. The June 18th, 2015 Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona, Supreme Court decision compels your city to once again amend its sign ordinance. From that decision, it states, assuming for the sake of argument that aesthetics and traffic were compelling government interest, the majority opinion following the ordinance distinctions to be hopelessly under-inclusive, as directional signs are no more of an eyesore or traffic hazard than ideological or political signs. In a separate concurring opinion, several justices noted, the ordinance does not pass strict scrutiny, intermediate scrutiny, or even the laugh test. Every sign ordinance in this city to date has been unconstitutional and enforced selectively. Sign enforcement is all subjective, which means zoning administrator and council for appeals decides violations without any enacted rules for issuing citations. From the League of Minnesota Cities Information Memo on Sign Ordinances and the First Amendment, the First Amendment principles amongst them are the main substantial governmental interests recognized by courts are traffic safety and aesthetics. Joan Claybrook, former head of the United States Department of Traffic Safety, gave a sworn statement for my lawsuit saying that in all her 30 or so years in that position, she had never seen any evidence that signs created safety hazards or accidents. City offered no standards to base the false assumption that my signs created a traffic hazard and/or devalued surrounding properties. Who would believe that the Minnesota State Legislature would allow unlimited signs on private property for almost an entire year in 2016, an election year, and every year, if they devalued property or caused traffic accidents? I believe striking the language prohibiting advertising or promoting tobacco usage indicates the city sign clause in the ordinance was unconstitutional. That's one of the proposals of this sign amendments. Why did Little Falls allow real estate and construction project signs on private property to be exempted in the current ordinance and proposed amendments against the advice of the League of Minnesota Cities, which states, be especially cautious about provisions that favor some messages over others, such as exemptions for real estate or construction project signs? And yet, in the proposed amendments, not only are those construction and roof signs going to be exempted, but also now P O D signs, advertising signs on pots, storage pots. When does it end?
Anyone else wish to speak? During that, we'll move on to regular council informational items. Elm Street feasibility report.
On page 15 of your regular agenda, we've got the council memo relating to the petition for Elm Street. We kind of went through this a little bit last time or a couple of meetings ago regarding Elm Street. It was a private road prior to 1995, annexed to the city in 2003, I call it, it's small print up there. This is kind of a picture of what Elm Street looked like in 2003. The black and white is the 2003 photo that we have on file. And the magenta color here is what we discussed with the 2004 slash 2005 Riverwood project. You'll notice on the next picture, we actually installed a couple of cul-de-sacs to make the cul-de-sac larger than what it was previously. This is just the wall of that area. So right here, you can kind of see where the joint is at, where we made this a little bit wider to allow turn movements of vehicles to come through there. This is what it would look like if we were to, you know, increase that cul-de-sac to the size required by our ordinance there. We'd obviously need considerably more blacktop as well as considerably more right-of-way into that area in order to make that work. We did conduct traffic calls for Elm Street area, and we did get, you know, 30, 39 views for trips per day to go through here. Now, a trip, if you go to the store and you come back, that's two trips, because you went past once and you came past a second time. You'll notice the peak hour, we've got two here, we've got three there, we've got four here and two on that particular time. So there's not a whole lot of traffic as we suspected going in and out of Elm Street there. Looks in line with, you know, the number of parcels that are out there, three or four vehicles coming and going in that particular hour. So with that, as you can read through the agenda memo, we did have one property owner that originally signed the petition that requested to be removed for that petition. So looking at the, you know, the flooding footage that comprised of it, originally, we were at 50.4, now we're at 21.9 percent of the property owner's petition for it. Tonight, I would recommend that we not go forward with the feasibility report. It doesn't look like it's cost-effective to do that project. If there's any questions, we'll be glad to answer, but that's kind of where we're at with it.
Greg, do you know what the width of that cul-de-sac is now with the flooding footage?
The current one?
Yeah.
Not offhand, I'd say it's probably close to 30, 35 feet. It is, it's large enough for basically a passenger vehicle to turn around there. Not necessarily the passenger vehicle with a trailer, but if a passenger vehicle will be able to turn around there. Definitely not a plow truck into there. You'd have to go much wider, you'd have to go, you know, something like this in order to get our plow trucks to turn around there. But it's such a short street that we may do with it there in order to, you know, not necessarily take out that many trees, purchase right-of-way. There's a lot of difficulties with that particular area to move forward with it.
So if, you said that we would have to live by ordinance every level, what is required by ordinance?
What by ordinance is? 50 foot radius. Or the right-of-way is 40 foot radius for the road itself. So you're gonna go 80 feet all the way across in order to make that work.
Sounds like current is going at 66?
Adheemen is 66 feet wide by 66 feet wide. And we would need 100 feet gold, gold sides in order to make that work.
So the adheemen is 66 by 66, or the turnaround is?
The adheemen is 66 by 66, the blacktop is not that big. The blacktop is probably 35 feet across.
Where does our plow truck push it out?
Right now, I believe it pushes it down over to here. A large part of them are trees, pretty good size. They've been there quite a while. They can see these are pine trees on the south side over there. They're probably twelve inches in diameter. They're about 20-year-old trees. Probably shouldn't go for it, yeah.
Did it go right up? Were you taking public comment, Bill? Sorry.
Did it go right up to the trees before, I mean, on the south? If you look right here, this is black here, the dashed line is where it was previously. You know, there's some room in between there where we added the cul-de-sac, but it was close to the tree before. Well, they were probably smaller. Smaller scale, yeah.
Greg, I have a copy of a resolution from, and this is Town of Bellberry here. So this is from 1995, this is when, must be when they first put it in. And it says that we, something about to provide a turnaround for maintenance vehicles. It would be, the described road would be 66 feet wide. Of the westmost, 66 feet. So was that 66 feet wide at some point?
No, what they're describing there is the adheemen. Let me back up to them here. We have an adheemen along Elm Street. The coming out of Riverwood this year is 33 feet wide. And when you get to the last 66, it widens out to a total of 66 feet wide. So they're describing the entire roadway, so it's 33 feet and bumps up to a total of 66.
66 feet wide, 66 feet.
Correct, yeah.
Besides what the right-of-way is, that's not with the cul-de-sac?
That's what the right-of-way is, that's not with the cul-de-sac. Technically, it's an adheemen, well, technically, it's an adheemen of both the right-of-way and the cul-de-sac area.
Do you have a question for Greg?
Well, this was brought up, I believe, because of large vehicles and combination vehicles going down there and then not having an outlet.
True.
So, independent of the cul-de-sac, are we still gonna look at improved signage or something to try to prevent the vehicles from going down there?
Looking at the sign that's currently over here, you know, there's a street light right on the end, there's high visibility. I don't know what else you could do to keep vehicles from going down there. We did get video of this area when we did the traffic calls. It's all passenger vehicles, there's nothing other than, you know, a single vehicle going down there. So why vehicles think they should be turning down there, which we didn't witness, it's beyond me, there's a dead-end sign, it's lighted. I don't know what else they're thinking of.
How about, can there be something southbound Riverwood, you know, Highway 10 with an arrow straight ahead?
For anyone coming down Riverwood?
Right. There's one over by the Community Services Building going the other direction.
Yep.
If you missed that, you're just not paying attention, and that one is.
True, true.
Very obvious.
I mean, we can, I would say 99% of the individuals that come southbound Riverwood is local traffic.
Right.
Normally, when you sign something, it's for those that are out of town. Why anybody would be coming down Riverwood, from out of town to get to Highway 10, surprises me, because when you come out to 371 upon Court of Six, it directs you down onto 76. And then when you get over by the bowling alley, there's a sign pointing to the right. So you come from the right here to get onto Highway 10.
I'm just looking at entertainment, cost-effective solution to this problem of vehicles going down there. I can't explain a combination vehicle like a semi truck going there, but a bus is easy to explain away, they're probably leaving the soccer field, possibly.
Is there any legitimate reason that that dead-end sign could not be placed closer to the intersection?
You don't want to place it too close, because normally, you don't have enough reaction time. When you're turning, you're concentrating on those vehicles coming from you and turning. So it's set back a little bit, so by the time you get, you can still see it from the intersection, but it's back enough so that you're paying attention to the road and you see the sign. If you put it too close, they just, they.
By the time you see that sign, you're already, you're already around the corner and onto the street. It's, it's about dislocation right here. It's placed where it should be placed. And I think the fact it's going northbound, it's, yes, southbound is the issue.
You have to have it backed to see it has your turn.
It's turned right there, or otherwise it's right in your face.
And I would have thought it would have been, you know, that they would miss them more coming from the south, only because if you're coming from Rainier, and you have to get off by tab and fever and then take that left, I see more people go past radio station towards town and missing that right turn. So maybe after you make a U-turn and come back and go down that road, they're so confused and keep going around the curve, because I see that as a problem, but that's state. It's not our issue, that other one.
You put another dead-end sign on the other side of the street, so you can. That's not conventional.
It's cheaper than the cul-de-sac.
It's cheaper than the cul-de-sac. Local traffic owner? I mean, I'm not, I don't think that would communicate that a dead-end, local, long enough for not to turn the street. More trucks alone. Well, I.
Someone's intent on not paying attention to signs, then they can figure out how to get out of there. The problem is that one lane may not drive into the other.
Because obviously, you're only doing it in street town. If you don't have a 66 for gold side, you can't fit.
Correct.
It would be one of the easier ones to turn around with any vehicle, although there's three drivers coming up. Well, I would be one that would be interested in looking at another sign for a solution. And I know it's redundant, but to get, like you said, if that one sign would present, we've got somebody from making U-turns or three yards there to pay for itself once. And I don't know if that's, I understand that's probably not conventional to have them cross the road from each other, but if we're trying to solve the problem, it makes a lot more sense than putting in a cul-de-sac and charging all the neighbors for.
In a way, it'd be a little, it'd be a little confusing if you have them on both sides of the road, because that tells me it's a one-way. So if you turn down there and you see them on both sides, so that could be a little confusing there.
I would rather that nobody go down there like them residents.
I would rather see the one that says, you know, Highway 10 pointing straight than like two dead-end signs. Because like Greg said, you know, either it's a one-way or both lanes of that traffic are going westbound in that case. So I think that would have the potential to confuse drivers a little bit. So two signs right across the road on Elm Street that are close to the Highway 10 one pointing south on Riverwood.
Well, I'd say depending on how the vote goes on, whether or not we are going to move forward with that, that if we would, I would like the CSC to issue a term to work through that. Because there's got to be something we do to alleviate that somewhat, which would be much more, have an awful event. Maybe on a cul-de-sac, that'd be a good thing.
Plow truck?
Plow truck. Tonight, we're looking at requesting the council that we purchased a plow truck for 2017. There's a 12 to 14 month wait time. Originally, the, technically, the state bid ended on Riverwood first. And so I did speak with representatives from the町 to kind of get us on the list. If we decide not to order that, we can still take it off. But I wanted to, you know, at least get our names on the list, knowing how long in advance the plow trucks have to be ordered, so that we can try to take advantage of the costs, knowing it's this year's cost as opposed to the next year's price. Our current plow truck is from 1994, it has 70,000 miles on it. Even though it's not a whole lot of miles, keep in mind, this is, I'd say 90% of those miles are plow, which are hard on the vehicle, the transmission's starting to get weak, there's a number of other different things that we've had to go through. If you're looking for the memo, it's on page 11 of the council meeting. But we are looking at splitting the cost up into two different years. One would be fiscal year 2016, the next one would be 2017. You have to buy the chassis first, and then you purchase the plow and sander and all that stuff separately from another vendor. So we'd be able to split those two up into two prices so that it doesn't impact our budget as much from the equipment side.
Any questions?
I'm gonna ask you, even though I think I know the answer to this, just so the public knows. When we talked about the chassis and then the plow, it's more than a plow, right? We're talking about the blocks, the sander, wing, plow?
Correct, all that.
Okay.
And all the hydraulics go along with it, the lights, all that.
And will the plow be manned in Little Falls?
It'll be a plow, yeah. I didn't order any other ones.
Any other questions? Golf course manager?
Just kind of giving you an update on the golf course manager position. We did help hold the interviews for seven applicants on Thursday last week. Both went very well. Right now, we're in the process of telling all the scores from those applicants. And then we're going to do background checks and see where everything eventually falls in terms of extending an offer of employing you tomorrow. So I fully expect, either at your next meeting or the following one, to have something in front of you from the interview committee regarding the golf course manager. But I was very pleased with the applicants that we did receive, and I think we're gonna get a very good candidate based on our reviews.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Sign ordinance amendments, Ed?
Okay, thank you. So just to back down to this, obviously, you all know that there's been history over the last number of years of issues with sign ordinance, and trying to work through some of those. So that's one of the elements that contributed to trying to draft out something different here. And also, as was mentioned earlier tonight, there was a US Supreme Court decision this past summer that has cities all over the country kind of looking at their ordinance to check and consult for changes and things. So just as a quick synopsis of that Supreme Court decision, the city that was involved in that case that was getting challenged with their sign ordinance had developed at least these three different categories of signs that were the subject of the case. And basically, they regulated or they defined them based on the message that was on that sign. So they had ideological signs, political signs, and temporary directional signs. And obviously, you had to look at the sign and read it, and find out what message was conveyed. And then the city would apply different rules to them based on that. Different sizes, different lengths of time that they could use in place, different situations, things like that. And what the court essentially said was that that's not a valid way of doing it in terms of the United System of the Free Amendment, of free speech. And so they basically came up with a ruling that said, if you have to redesign to regulate it, you can do that, but it's very, very, very limited circumstances that you can do that. You don't have some very, very good reasons to do that. Almost to the point where there aren't any good reasons. Prior to that decision, I think the consensus among attorneys and city staff and the people who deal with sign ordinances, based on court decisions I think that come down from the past, was that you could come up with different categories of signs, as long as you didn't regulate the speech within those categories. So for instance, political signs, you can have a category that's for political signs, but you can't pick and choose which political messages get put on those signs. Same thing for ideological signs or whatever else. That was kind of the common wisdom. If you know anything on the history of sign regulations in the Supreme Court, in courts in general across the United States, it's kind of a constantly changing thing. So it's a bit of a challenge to stay on top of it. But that was the decision this past summer. And so, like I said, a lot of cities are trying to. And so, like I said, a lot of cities are trying to figure out what that means and what could be our ordinances and find out what needs to change. So that was part of what we did in this draft amendment here. Other than that, the general purpose of these amendments is kind of already outlined in the current language of the ordinance. Obviously, we're trying to comply with federal and state law. We need to do that. We're trying to regulate the number, things like the number of the signs, the location of signs, their size, whether they're lighted or not, things that don't have anything to do with the message. So basically, the physical characteristics of the signs. There's an element of preventing visual clutter and aesthetics of signs that have been followed by courts that have been passed. Providing for effective means of communication for the public and anybody who else is probably on a sign, using someone's, but it is generally allowing more signage and more flexibility in commercial and industrial areas than in residential. Allowing some kind of small, unobtrusive signs that don't need to be regulated, and providing the parent system, of course. So those are the general goals of what we'll be trying to do here. In terms of what's in the ordinance and still would be exempted, just like it is today, there's a state law in place that says forty-six days before a state primary election, so ten days after that election, you can have as many signs as you want, any size, any number in a yard or a property. The city code has gone beyond that and said, in addition to most statewide elections, in a special election period, there's a time period where you can also have those signs. What's still not allowed, and we didn't make any changes in the draft, changes here, still can't put signs in the public right-of-way unless it's, you know, traffic, so the government is putting up...you can't put up signs that indicate stop signs or police sirens or anything like that. And then there's a few other things that are still unchanged, based on the draft that we put together. What would change in terms of the exemptions is that the things that we have to read to regulate, we would take out, again, based on that Supreme Court decision. So previously, we had exemption for real estate signs, construction signs, and that would be eliminated now. Those would no longer be examples with public courts here. Same thing with nameplate signs, those signs that are on the side of a building that say the address of the property or the owner's name or the business name. There wasn't exemption for those, or there is right now, but we're moving that. Signs on mailboxes. And then a little bit more significantly, based on some of the issues in the past few years, off-premise signs were, for the most part, proposing that we get rid of that distinction. I'll go through that in a little bit here in Doc's. So in the proposed ordinance, things that we would exempt now that aren't exempted in the current ordinance, all signs that are less than one and a half or one-half square foot. And this is our attempt to say, these are the small, unobtrusive signs that really don't contribute to clutter. A lot of times, they're not even readable from a public right-of-way or sidewalk. We talked about whether I should do one square feet or a half square foot or whatever else we decided on to add for now. But the idea there is to say, these are signs that are so small that they're really not worth regulating or working with. We have signs that the government puts up in the right-of-way for traffic flow and safety purposes. If you've got an existing sign and all you're doing is changing out the face of that sign, you're not changing the size of it, you're not changing the height, you're not changing the location. You're just switching out one, like for instance, if a business changes from one business to another, you have to be exempt from that ordinance. This is again based on conversations with attorneys, that there's some argument out there to be made that for county and state, federal properties, and even school district properties, that they are exempt from local regulations. I think that's debatable. But we'll be in the deciding, was it really worth having that fight or just exempting them altogether? So that's in the proposed ordinance. In some of those zoning districts, basically, the R three district where there's more multifamily housing, and then in the business and industrial districts, if you have a sign that's more than a hundred feet from the right-of-way, it's less visible, it's not going to contribute to clutter, as long as it's under three square feet with six inch livery or six square feet with three inch livery. Again, the idea is, whatever those numbers are that we set a lot, it's supposed to be, you know, not really contributing to clutter, not readable, it's not going to cause any trouble for the public to see. We reworked the flag exemption. Right now, it says that you can have, in residential property in particular, you can have two flags or two signs or one flag and one sign, and that's your maximum. What we've changed the flags to is to say you can have up to fifty square feet total of flags on your property. There's no limit on the number of them. Any one flag could not be larger than forty square feet. So if you had your one forty-square-foot flag, you would only have ten square feet left to work with if you wanted a four- flag. In commercial industrial areas, it would be up to three hundred square feet that you could have. Actually, there was a typo in the draft ordinance that everybody was that particular that they said, I think they said it would require permitting. The intent is that that would not require permitting, up to three hundred square feet. If you want to go larger to six hundred square feet, something like the Perkins house, all of the state has larger flags. And we would require additional use permit, and that's basically for safety purposes because they're taller, they're bigger, they're going to tear off of the cycles to fall down. So we require additional use of that. Things that are intended, you know, like dumpsters and portable storage units are things that are owned and maintained by a private company that, you know, they're handling waste management or storage things. If a sign was sort of integrally part of that, so it's painted on, it's engraved into it with the name of the company that owns it and maintains it, we would exempt those. Personal property, things like a snowmobile that says Glares on the side of it, we would exempt that if you needed to insert a sign and engrave something like that. Murals, right now, you exempt murals in your current ordinance as long as they are approved by the state council and they're more than, I think, a hundred and fifty feet from residential zone property. What we would change there is that as long as they were on a commercial or industrial building, they would be exempt. There would be no setback to residential property, you know, it's not a very good condition of that. Also, just to step back there, on murals, we came up with a more clear definition, hopefully, of what a mural is compared to a sign. So the definition of mural would say that only a certain percentage of that mural space could be reading. The intent being that most of it is going to be photos or pictures or something that's not word, not communicating, direct messaging like that. And then signs that are on city property would have to be approved by the council. And then any other signs that are required by law. Examples might be things like handicap parking signs or gas stations, the signs that's topical to land, conurbility gas cars, things like that. And then the other signs that would be required by state federal law. When permits would be required, we're proposing some changes here for discussion. And instead of saying basically that every sign needs to be permitted, we would say that only those signs that are over seven feet in height are uppermost portion of the sign. And that roughly coincides with when building code is required for signs. And so if you have, in the bottom underlined statement there, is if you had signs that you were poking in the ground in front of your business or a banner that was on your ground, you wouldn't, you know, permit for it, but it's still going to count against your overall living traffic. So we would still make sure that they were adhering to their overall size limits. We wouldn't worry about permitting for signs for those kinds of signs. In residential districts, if you have a single-family house on your lot or a duplex, the size limit for any one sign would stay at eight square feet. That's the same as today's ordinance. The total for all of the signs on your property would go up from eight square feet to sixteen square feet. The height maximum would stay the same as it is now, quarter feet. And the limit on the number of signs on your property would go from two to however many you wanted up to that sixteen square. And then signs in the residential district generally not be allowed to be applied. If you have three or more going use on your property, we would have a different set of standards for those kinds of properties. Again, it's eight square feet maximum for any one sign, a change from today's ordinance. But per property, it would depend on your road front. The more road frontage you can, the more signs you would get, sixteen square feet up to forty-eight square feet. The height maximum again would be four feet, no limit on the number of signs as long as you stay at those limits. The one exception to the size limits would be that you could have one sign up to thirty-two square feet. That would be off by the road at eighteen and high. That sign can be externally illuminated, kind of the one in color right there. So that's the one exception. You can have one of those per road front. So if you have a corner lot, you can have one of those signs on each side. The stipulation would be that that sign has to be within thirty feet of the right-of-way. The intent being it's out by the road. So that'd be for residential districts. For business districts, there's not a lot of changes in terms of how much signage people can have. The one change we did there was to say that every commercial property would get at least fifty square feet of signage. We had some properties that had very narrow frontages and they're hot, and were only being, I'd say, forty square feet or so. It felt that it would be appropriate to say that there's some minimum that every business gets fifty square feet. If you have more than one side of your building on a public road, we're maybe tweaking this a little bit for the public period next week, but the idea being that if you have a business that backs up to a parking lot, for instance, where people can come in from the parking lot into a rear entrance, or maybe from a side entrance, that we would give you an additional fifty square feet to use for signage on the property so that you can put signs. Telling people where to go in and out of those properties. And then for industrial districts, there's not really a change as well. If there's any existing non-conforming signs out there, which there usually are and there are right now, they would be allowed to remain as long as they're not moved or expanded, they're definitely in good condition, they're not abandoned. In terms of being valid, be permitted or legal at the time of construction, we would look into that, like we have been up in the past. If there's bond records that show that they weren't legally permitted or weren't put up legally, then we could deal with that. But if it's so old or it's been up there so long, and records just aren't there to show one way or the other, it's obviously difficult to go to somebody and say, well, you got to take it down, but not really have the evidence to show it's a lie. Clarifies my language, but that...but if there's insufficient records, then we're just going to consider their grandfather again. It still can change the size, again, you know, they got to keep them in good condition. One of the questions that arises out of this that isn't in the draft ordinance per se, but I wanted to make sure that we highlighted and discussed a little bit, was right now the urban ordinance bans billboards and bans signs over three and a half square feet. Given the Supreme Court decision that talked about reading the sign to be able to regulate it, obviously, you have to read a billboard to determine that it's advertising something off-site. It was interesting that some of the concurring decisions of the justices in that Supreme Court decision, they said they were still okay with this distinction, to say you could ban premise signs, billboards, those kinds of things. But I think it's, you know, somewhat problematic to be giving into reading a message like that. And so our initial thought was to just get rid of that distinction, keep the three hundred square foot limit, just like we've always had, not always, but the last seven or two years anyways. And people say height limitations and just not worry about whatever's on it. But, you know, I think even though the sizes and heights aren't going to be changing, the fact that we would now be allowing for off-premise advertising might make these more attractive to some landowners to be able to put on the property and that kind of thing. You know, billboards can be controversial in terms of the aesthetics of the view of it. So one thing you could do if you didn't like that, reduce the maximum size of, say, the V three industrial districts, three hundred square feet to something less. Or we could just go with what the Supreme Court seems to be saying, is that you can still make a distinction with off-premise advertising and say we will allow off-premise advertising for signs that are small, but not for large ones. And we could set thirty-two square feet and larger sixty-four square feet, something that would be in line with what your competition is. So I just want to make sure we highlight in that, so that we can generate some discussion.
Signage, you know, like the V one, V two, we got residential, so we're going off with land use is not what it's on, correct? So somebody's using a business district or residential?
We could talk about that. At this point, we've been going based on no its own. So if you wanted to base it on how it's actually being used as a property, maybe we would be a little bit... So for instance, if there's a single-family home that's own business right now, it's a business property, so that's a good distinction.
Well, that's just something to keep in mind with twenty-seven, that's all its own business from downtown all the way to Corvance, and it's all residential basically. So if you don't care, it's reported off-premise signs.
Right.
Well, and I should clarify your... The three hundred square foot is only the V three district, which is out by the interchange with Haverhill Town, primarily. There's some up north on Seventy-Sixty, but mostly it's all by the interchange and thirty-foot high maximum. When you get into the downtown area of V one and V two, then it goes on to the hundred square foot maximum, and they're fifteen and twenty-three, five and ten. So that stretch between sort of downtown and interchange, you know, you wouldn't get three hundred square foot, so you'd get one hundred square foot left.
Mr. President, I have a comment. If there's any questions, I have a question. But first of all, Ben, thank you for, you know, you put a lot of time and effort into this and Tony also, the staff. So thank you for that. I think it's something that our public has been concerned about with all of us. I think we've all heard the garage sale story a few times, and I think this addresses a lot of the concerns that I heard when I was campaigning and after. So thank you for that. Ben, would you identify, you know, we talked right-of-way, that they still can't put in the right-of-way? Could you identify that?
Where the right-of-way is.
What the right-of-way definition of the right-of-way is?
Oh, the right-of-way would be not just the road surface, but also the sidewalks, and sometimes even beyond that a little bit. It's the area in which the public has right-of-way to put the road in, to put utilities in, wherever it might be. So, you know, some people might feel like their property runs out to the road or onto the sidewalk, but it doesn't necessarily be that. There's a public right of way there, it's all public services. So any signs that are put into that right-of-way would not be allowed under today's ordinance or the proposed ordinance. Just a sign that everybody puts up for traffic reasons or whatever.
And the off-premise, once again, if somebody was having a garage sale two blocks from me, they could put one in my yard and get permission?
Yeah, so you would... Yep, as long as it's on private property and I'm a landowner and where the sign sits is giving permission to do that, it would count against their size limit for their property. And so if somebody comes to me and says, hey, I have a garage sale sign in my yard, I would have to realize that it's going to count against my event. And so if I have other signs I want to put up, I reach my maximum, I would be able to do that. But you can't, you know, somebody can't just go put it in somebody else's yard, obviously. You still can't put it in the right-of-way or on the corner of the street. And that's definitely still...it's a little hard for them, but it's not part of law, you know, you can't just put it in.
And I have to say, I do like that bonus fifty square feet for businesses because there's so many downtown businesses where your back entrance is actually used more than their front entrance is, and if they don't have that amount of square foot, and just for record, I'm no longer a downtown business person, so I can't speak up because of that. But there are a lot of businesses that, that's their main entrance. So I do like that.
And current building law, the garage sale signs and flags would both count, both the new one, there's several, correct?
You know, flags and the signs are separated in the core. So it's a different, what different it is.
Yeah, you've mentioned that the less than half square foot signs were exempt. How many of those can I have?
We talked about that at this point. It would not limit to...you know, I think we would have an issue if somebody were putting them all right next to each other, you know, to the point where it would become a sign that's still in combination. And, you know, that's one...
And, you know, that's one, that's one point that could be discussed a little better. You wanted to set some kind of overall limit. You know, I, hopefully, for the most part, people would, I'm not going to say crazy, but I think. At this point, we don't have another limit. You could set one, you could set up, you know, maximum of five or 10, you could make a record of it. So if you've got 15 square feet of signage to put on your property, it's unlikely that somebody's going to put a bunch of half a square foot ones together when they were given 16 square feet, or have to get those. It's likely to be one or two bigger signs, so that you can read it, that's what 16 square feet comes to play.
And just to clarify, Mr. President, process that we're going through on this, step after step?
That's a big problem here tonight, and Monday night, we got a public hearing with a planning commission for all public input, to go forward from there. And then, I'm sure, any changes, come back, and go back to Tony, or the league, or play on pool, or before, if there's any drastic changes or proposals.
The ordinance changes that we have currently? If I may, Mr. President? We did publish in the paper that we were going to have a public hearing next Monday night, as well as an informational reading tonight, to try to give the public as much time and opportunity to speak on what happened with this ordinance. So tonight, we would have the first reading, and then we'd have a public hearing on Monday night, next Monday night, and then the second reading, potentially, on the 16th.
Mr. President, I have a question. Illuminated signs, does that take in? There was a gentleman here, talking about Christmas signage, well, they're illuminated. That's banned completely, you can't turn on any Christmas lights with any signs on it. Is that what you're saying here?
Well, I think the intent, you know, a string of Christmas lights is not illuminating the signs or saying.
You're saying buried in the Christmas.
Yeah, we could, we could try and clarify that. I mean, I think the intent is the same, you know, like in that picture I have before, where you're erecting a sign, shining lights on it. It's apparent that that's what is, you know, there, it's permanent, you know, that kind of stuff. Holiday decorations and that kind of thing. A streetlight on the corner could be, probably could be illuminating your signs. We could try and clarify that, look at that.
I agree, good idea. My dad used to have a spotlight on the Rudolph, and I hate to see that, he'd be devastated if that would have been a problem.
You have a question, Mr. President?
You went up with that half a square foot, you said you discussed a square foot?
Yeah, we just discussed what, you know, what would be appropriate size, as it stands. Just wondering why it's happening. You go half square foot, so one square foot. I think just, you know, one square foot is getting to be large enough for, you know, maybe if you have an impact on one or, maybe one aspect, if somebody's driving by. But, I think, I'm not going to say that it didn't match, but half square foot. The idea, again, is to, it's small enough that it's not going to contribute to clutter. The significance enough to really work, you would regulate it.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Actually, Randall, I think, has, and the first factor, he's been waiting. So, yeah, if there's nothing further from the council.
Go ahead.
I just wondered, Ben, as far as, I think you had like 32 square feet for residential, but then it had to be like 35 feet off the property?
Yeah, the bottom section there, so 32 square foot sign. This is, now, this is only for properties that have three dwelling units or more on the property.
Oh, okay.
So it's only going to be for like townhome situations, or apartment building situations. This wouldn't be a single-family neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I'd like to ask why mailboxes were taken out, exempted.
Are no longer exempted?
Yeah, are no longer exempted, right.
We just felt like it wasn't, you know, I think, as I understand it, and I don't claim to know all the details, but as I understand it, I think the post-massacre hasn't regulations about what can go on in mailboxes and that kind of thing. We just felt like it was, it was up to them, if somebody wanted to put a sign on their mailbox, and it was on their private property, then we were counting against the limit, if it was over half square foot.
So, any that are up now, that are legally conforming because they are exempted under the current ordinance, then are grandfathered in, like any other legal non-conforming exempted item in the sign ordinance? Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, I could look into that. I mean, I guess my understanding of grandfathering is that something that used to be allowed is no longer allowed. In this case, we're taking something that was arguably allowed before, and it's still allowed. And so, I don't know that grandfathering would be the right word, but... I think we would count it against the person's limit for their property, at this point, if it was over half square foot.
Even though it was exempted in the former ordinance, you would now...
Yeah, I can look into that.
Okay, then I just have a question also. Do the Lions have to have, do they pay the city in order to have the display of Christmas at La Berge Park? And, and I know that you guys, after the fact, after they were erected last fall, authorized those Lindbergh signs to be, and the whole Christmas display, to be legal in the city-owned park. Could indeed Mr. Birkenis do the same thing on City Hall property, or any other park in the city? Could he request to do so, and would there be a charge for him? And would his signs be allowed, and maybe some of my signs for Christmas?
I can look into it, Robin.
Is there a charge to the Lions for doing that?
I don't know, right now?
Well, Greg's here, he would know.
I'd have to check, I don't, I don't know where I'm at right now.
Okay. Well, I'd sure like to find out the answer to that question. If others who can't have their Merry Christmas signs, like Mr. Birkenis, or others who want to decorate with larger signs, could put it on other city properties? Or if you guys are only going to make an exception for one group?
Well, I can't speak for guys that live in my neighborhood, but they're able to decorate up their houses in the neighborhood, so I don't know, I, I don't think anybody's ever requested it, so.
Well, yeah, Lindbergh Lions did last year, and you guys granted it. And you granted illegal signage as well, that was over the 32-square limit.
Anything under water? Greg? Chuck? Any else? Greg?
Mr. President, I just have some forms that I had met with Soylent Water, and they're, Morrison County's doing a local water plan update, and I believe we call under that, so someone I've known, Greg, just wanted to know if we should, ultimately, like, do a survey on their permit, and if the city, we can get it out to Helen, or whatever, someone's going to ask us.
That's a deadline to get them back.
Yes, please.
He didn't really want to.
Very good, we'll be adjourned till 7:30.